Okay, so welcome everyone to our March, I know we'll say February, our March Town Hall. We have several exciting updates for you guys. We're excited. Thank you for joining us today. Since we're right in the middle of the cookie season, we're going to start off with the cookie update. I'm Kelly.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming to Town Hall. So we got a couple few, I see a question in the box. Maybe I'll just start there. Um, we are going to be talking about cookies. I'm talking about now. Boot sales, we are going to touch base on in a little bit. We're not approved yet to do boot sales. Not until trips are approved, but hopefully we are shooting for April, but nothing set in stone. Um, we're just hoping that the numbers continue to go down. Nassau County is doing boot sales on a very strict, um, very regimented way. Um, they said they sent Jenna and I the, you know, the preliminary protocol for approving their boot sales, and it's a little crazy. Um, so me and Jenna were like kind of laughing a little bit. Um, so it is a little crack, right? So we are going to hold off on boot sales right now, but hopefully we're shooting for, for April. But we are going to have a special patch weekend. The weekend of March 19th through the 21st, we're going to call it Think Outside the Box Weekend. So anything you decide you want to do, whether it be a virtual boot sale or a standabout, you will earn a patch that weekend. Okay? It's still just the family and the girl. But um, we just thought let's, let's have something different and um, Jenna thought of the Think Outside the Box Weekend and I thought it was adorable. So we're going to run with that. So we're going to send out some emails about that, probably tomorrow or the next day. And that way everybody's on the same page, but you heard it first here. Okay? Um, troop sites are going, are going swimmingly. Excuse me. Now, a troop site is basically when you sign into eBuddy and you see that random girl there that says troop site, and she's in the fourth grade. She is, that's the site you can set up where if someone, back in the day when someone put their zip code in and they got their, the closest boot sale location. Now that if you set up your troop site, you're going to get those sales via digital cookie. So what happens is if I put in 11779, my twins troop is going to pop up and then I could buy cookies and that troop is going to get credit for it. Um, so I think currently that has like 30 boxes of cookies sold for doing nothing. Totally free of having to pick them up or having to approve them or anything. Just free 30 boxes that they can assign to the girls at the end of the sale. So there is, Jen is going to show a little video on it. Um, and does it, does anybody need help with this or do they want me to show you how to do it? Put it in the chat box. So I know what you want to do. But in the meantime, Jenna, roll tape.
I muted. We played this at last, um, at the last town hall, which was like a week and a half ago. Um, but one of the things that we, we met with the baker afterward and they said of all of the troops that we have in Suffolk County, only 81 troops had actually published their troop site. Um, so obviously we want more troops to publish the site. Um, so we just, it's just a minute long video. Hold on, I have to. Actually. Um. Do it like a slide for it to blink.
To get your trip link set up, you'll first want to log into digital cookie. So you'll log in, you'll select the role. So you'll select your troop that you want to set up your link for. Continue. Then right here, you will see a new troop cookie site. Uh, you'll click start. You'll enter in your troop zip code, usually your meeting place. And select the troop lead. And then click save. From here, your troop cookie site details were updated. You'll close. Then you'll see your status, your site URL, and then your details. You can always change the troop lead and zip code if needed. Um, to set up the site URL, you will have to then log out. Log back in and you will now see a parent role. Continue. You will then have to go through all the videos, sign the pledge and the terms and conditions and set up your girl's troop site. Like you would just for a normal girl and then you'll be good to go.
So the instructions for that, um, are on our, oh, the screen is blank. It's coming in now. You guys didn't see the video? None of you?
Well, I thought it was just me.
Team.
All right. Hello, Girl Scout parents.
I did. I thought it was just my computer.
I saw a video. To see.
Yeah.
How the.
Oh, see, I didn't either. And I thought it was just me. All right.
Yeah, I thought the same thing. Jenna, do you want me to show them live? You muted.
So we can, you know what I can do? I can just bring you to the, um, on like on the site. Like we don't have to go through the whole video again. Um, but what I, but if we go to GSSC, I'll show you where it is. If that's easier. Um. And then I can show you the PowerPoint that's on the website. So one more time, one more day. Oh, somebody is okay with watching briefly. All right. So I'll show you both. Um. There you go. All right. So if we go to gssc.us, um, everybody sees that, right?
Yes, we do.
So, um, the information for cookies is typically in the cookies and more. So like if you click on this and you'll see all the cookie breakdown, because this was a, was a PowerPoint that Kelly created for last time's Town Hall. It's actually under Town Hall as well. So if you go to program and events, then click down to virtual Town Hall. Um. Oops, oops, sorry. A little too many links. Um, and then we're just going to scroll down. Um, it has the video from the February 23rd thing and then right under here you see view the February Girl Scout presentation. It's just right there. So that you can see all the kind of questions that we went through that time. And then you're just going to go down to the different pages. It is on the page that has the trip link. So that's page nine. Um, and then we can click on the video if you guys don't mind now.
To get your trip link set up, you'll first want to log into digital cookie. So you'll log in, you'll select the role. So you'll select your troop that you want to set up your link for. Continue. Then right here, you will see a new troop cookie site. Uh, you'll click start. You'll enter in your troop zip code, usually your meeting place. And select the troop lead. And then click save. From here, your troop cookie site details were updated. You'll close. Then you'll see your status, your site URL, and then your details. You can always change the troop lead and zip code if needed. Um, to set up the site URL, you will have to then log out. Log back in and you will now see a parent role. Continue. You will then have to go through all the videos, sign the pledge and the terms and conditions and set up your girl's troop site. Like you would just for a normal girl and then you'll be good to go.
Okay. So that's it. It really just takes a step. The biggest thing you're going to have to do is re-watch the videos that you've already watched when you established um, your digital cookie site for your daughters. Um, and then, um, also on that presentation, you're going to have, if there's a PDF that will just do the same thing and show you the same steps, but without the video. So there's two ways that you can do it. It's just an added step that we, we never had before. Um, because this troop link, um, is a new thing. So not everybody knows that they have to do it. Um, but there's an algorithm built in to pull up the zip codes and it'll do different troops that if there, if there's a lot of troops in that same zip code, it'll, it's built so that not all the same ones pop up. But right now it's all the same ones popping up because not many troops have made their troop link live. So that's just an added step we need to do now.
Okay, I'm just going to jump to the chat for a moment. Um, you can use social media moms groups. Um, your daughters, your troop site, you can share these on the moms groups. You can't share them on marketplace sites. So you can't do Facebook Marketplace or anything like that. Um, it's up to you. There's probably quite a few links on there, but I mean, it can't hurt if you want to do it once or twice. Um, let me see, there was another one. How do you assign the cookies from the troop site at the end of the sale? Because otherwise we'll be doing it every single day. Um, Melinda and I will go in and make all those cookies available for allocation. Okay? But we're going to wait till the end of the sale because otherwise we'll be doing it like every day. So, um, we don't have that kind of time. So we're going to do it at the end of the sale and then give you directions on how to assign them to the girls. And that way the girls can use it for credit for rewards. Um, just trying to see if there's anything else in here real quick. Two, two, two. Okay. So, I mean, it's free cookies, people. It's free cookies. Do it. It takes literally like three minutes and the girls will earn some free cookies for their rewards. So, um, there was one troop last week when we were talking to the bakery, they had 169 boxes of free cookies. Free cookies. The, my daughter's troop last week had, I think, 22. They're probably up to like 30 now. But you know, it all depends. There was one question earlier. Um, if you live closer to Nassau County and there's not that many troops set up, it's going by zip code and mile radius. So set them up because we don't want to give them to Nassau. We want us to keep them. So let's make sure that we're setting them up, you know, and that way that's going there. Um, another quick tidbit, after you pick up your ketchup orders and we release them to your troop, please make sure that you're going back in and confirming the order. Um, that finalizes your order after pickup and we need you to do this for us. Okay? Um, we have a request. Um, there are some troops that you put in your order and then another girl calls with another order and then another girl calls with another order. Please don't put in multiple appointments. Okay? We're asking you if you can, if you go under your transactions tab, you can click on the original appointment and change it. You could change the box counts as long as it's before we release it to you. You could go in there and change it 55 times. Um, but the more appointments you put, put in, the less appointments there are for other troops to come down. So it would be really helpful if you could do that for us. Um, it just, I had, we had a troop today had four orders. So that's four appointments that someone else couldn't take and we were full today. So, um, it's just helpful, you know, that way we can, we're still learning. So we're still trying to get the, the gist about how this is going.
In the beginning, people were doing it because they thought, because they were doing it by the girl. So like they thought it might automatically allocate to the, to the girl, but it doesn't. It just goes into that extras area. Um, so you'll still have to allocate it.
Yeah. So it's just helpful to us, you know, it gives, it gives more appointments to more people that way they could come down and get their cookies. Um, I'm going to just touch on standabouts because then I have a guest speaker who's going to um, touch firsthand about her experience with standabouts. Um, we have some door hangers that are available on our website um, that the girls can, uh, fill out and put on their neighbors' doors. Okay? Um, we're trying to keep this as contactless as possible. Um, so you know, if they pre-do their, their door hangers, they can hang it on the neighborhood. Um, and then they, the neighbors know when to come down and get their cookies. Um. Uh, when, when a parent reserves their boot sale, they, oh, no, I'm sorry, boot sale, standabout, they, um, will request it via the link on our website and we give what's called a standard standabout. Um, so we figure out what sells, you know, I'm not going to give you five cases of lemons. I'm going to give you more Samoas, more Thin Mints. So the ratio we came up with, just so in case anybody knows, I think it confuses people sometimes, is we give one case of lemons, two trees, two dosy does, two tagalongs, one case of smores, one case of toffee, my poor toffee. Jenna knows my pain. I, they feel so unloved. Um, three Samoas and three Thin Mints for a total of 15 cases. So usually a walkabout is about the same, but we only give two Samoas to them. And so we give a little bit more for a standabout, not quite as much as we would for a booth sale. So it's kind of right there in the middle. Um, I have to tell you, they have been going fantastic. Sold out all the time. These girls are doing fantastic with them and they love them. Um, we just wanted to try to keep them engaged and this was the best we could do with the circumstances that we're in. Um, so I just want to quickly, I had some pre-questions before, um, before we started. Um, someone asked with the cupboard hours at Edie where all of our cupboard hours are listed on our website. Um, but specifically Edie, um, Mondays they're closed, Tuesdays, Thursdays, they're there 10 to 2. Wednesday, Fridays, they're there 1 to 5 and Saturdays, they're there 10 to 12. Um, there was another pre-question about discount shipping weekends. Jen and I were just talking about that today. Um, we're, we're, we're in talks about it. We're thinking about doing some discount weekends, maybe not free shipping, but maybe discount. Um, where, you know, people can order online for direct ship and not pay as much for the shipping. So we're talking about that. So that might be coming down the pipe. Um, I just did mention before that we're shooting for boot sales in April. That was, um, another one of our questions. Um, and someone asked how they return the leftover cookies. So if you have leftover cookies from your standabout, you would hit the reservation link to do a return. It's on our website. Um, and you just fill in what you're returning. And then we will, we'll see you then at your appointment and you return your leftovers. Okay? So you're not, you don't have to pay for everything that you pick up. We do take the extras back. Okay? Um.
There's one in the Q and A, but which I just think we should say out loud just so everybody can hear it.
Okay, let me, we go.
Well, the question's, uh, how close to a pickup is an order confirmed? Um, so the, so when you create the order in eBuddy, um, it'll still say pending until we release it to you. So I think we all kind of thought in the beginning that there would be another prop, another step. So like you place the order, we say yes, and then it wouldn't be pending anymore. But the way the system is created, it's going to be pending until we release it. So so even though, so if you've placed the order, even if you place it five minutes before, you can still come and pick up the cookies. And then when you come, we'll give you the cookies, we will leave you and then you would do that step that Kelly was talking about to confirm the order. You're welcome.
And thank you, Barbara, for the compliment. We appreciate it. I'm kind of need them nowadays. So it's nice to hear compliments sometimes instead of just complaints. You know, Jenna knows my pain.
Yeah.
Um.
One thing to talk about for Nassau, they are doing boot sales, but when she was talking about the, they're doing single family boot sale. So they're not doing like a whole troop. So that's why it doesn't fall to the, the level of like, um, like a trip or anything like that. Um, because I know that their sale is winding down. Um, so we are looking at it. It's just, we, we have to, like in order to, we can't just turn on booth sales. We have to turn on a lot. Um, so we just want to just double check some of the numbers before we go that route.
And the girls are really doing fantastic with their standabouts. No complaints here. You know, the girls are loving it. We're loving it. It's fantastic. Um, the parents are doing great with the returns and paying and, you know, so everything seems to be going well. So I am going to.
Kelly, there was that one thing about the, um, if you, the, if they, like the orders that are pending. Um, so if you place order, you know how Kelly had said that if you place an order.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Remember. Yes, I remember now that you're saying it. So if you have placed an order, um, for the ketchup order, but you didn't come down to pick it up. Okay. Cause we have quite a few of those. We have one person who has like four orders sitting in the cupboard from like five different places and she, she just keeps not coming. So unless you go back in and delete that order, you're being charged for it. Whether it's released or confirmed, it's part of your, your money due now. So if you had a pending order that you never came to get and you still see it sitting there, because you know, you placed another one for a different day, delete it. If you are, you know, feeling a little scared about deleting it, shoot us an email. We'll delete it for you. Just give us the details. Um, but we're, we're still learning the system too with doing this and I tested it the other day and it's charging. So it does show on the summary page, it shows your order with a little star next to it. So you know that order was never released, but it's still charging you for it. So just keep that in mind. If you see that and you didn't pick it up, delete it or ask us to delete it. Okay? So I'm going to turn the, the, um, the floor over to our special.
You're muted, Kelly. She was saying fabulous things about you and you just, and we missed it, Ashley. And they were muted.
She just has done such a fantastic.
You're muted again.
Just forget it. Just go.
Okay, I'll go ahead and share my screen. I wanted to hear fantastic things about myself, but it's all right. I'll let it slide this time. All right, let me share my screen. Okay, can you guys all see my screen? Okay. All right, let me just turn this on. All right, you can still see it, right? Okay, cool. Okay, so my name is Ashley Wallace. I am the co-leader and the Cookie Chaos Coordinator of Troop 323. Um, so what I'm going to talk about for a few minutes tonight is just some tips, tricks and ideas for a successful standabout. Um, so we are a multi-level troop. We're based out of Lyndonhurst, although we do have some girls from West Babylon uh, in our troop as well. Uh, we're a pretty big troop. We've got 21 girls. So we have four leaders. Um, the girls are first and second year daisies as well as first year brownies and we have a cadet as well. So this is our third year doing cookie sales. So we're still, I guess relatively new. Um, but yeah, so this is our third year. Um, and believe it or not, we're actually currently closing in on almost 9,000 boxes sold so far this cookie season. Um, I almost passed out when I figured out that number. I couldn't believe we're at almost 9,000. And again, believe it or not, 6,000 of those boxes were sold at standabouts and it's really between pretty much six girls. Um, and it was done within the past three weeks. So these standabouts are, like Kelly said, selling out like crazy. So like I just said, standabouts are selling out. Um, people are on the hunt for cookies this year. Number one, everybody's been quarantined, right? So we're all off our diets and not living our normal lives. So we're sitting there craving cookies. But more importantly, because there's no booth sales this year and no walkabouts, people can't find cookies. They don't know where to go for cookies. Usually they go to Stop &amp; Shop or they go to Walmart or they go here, they go there and there's a cookie booth out front and they're able to find their cookies and that's not happening this year. So they're sitting there going, okay, where do I find cookies unless they happen to personally know a Girl Scout, which unfortunately not everybody knows one. Um. The the whole standabout thing, I'll be completely honest, when it was released that booth sales weren't happening and that, uh, walkabouts weren't happening, I was worried going, you know, everything that these girls can do sort of themselves to participate in cookie sales is being taken away. And like, let's be honest, these sales about, uh, standabouts are going to be selling what? 40 boxes at a clip? I really didn't think they were going to sell much. And like I said, I was worried that most of the cookie sales were going to fall on the parents because booth sales and walkabouts were the two things or, and door to door with the, the three things that the girls could really do. And now they couldn't do that. But our standabouts are selling out every single time. Like Kelly was saying, standards, uh, standabout pickup at the cupboard is about, it's about 180 boxes, give or take. But we were selling out constantly. So now we're adding cases to our pickups and sometimes we're even doubling our standabout pickups just for one weekend. Um, and we're still selling out. So we're picking up between 200 to 360 boxes at a time and still selling out within that allotted two weeks that we can hang on to those boxes. So encourage your girls to sell and of course the parents too, right? Sell, sell, sell. So if they haven't already done so, have the girl set a cookie goal, right? A cookie sales goal. If they have a goal and, and for them, more importantly, a prize in mind, it's going to help to motivate them. I know it does for my daughter. She's seven years old. Every year, as soon as we get that order form, she's looking at those prizes. Mom, what can I get? You know, she always wants to do better than she did last year. Um, so it really does motivate them. Um. The other thing is that once they hit their goal, usually they'll be motivated to even up their game. It's like, okay, you know, I'm only halfway through cookie season. I already sold a thousand boxes. Now I want to go for 2,000. Right? So they get excited about it. Um, but this year we're also dealing with a lot of the fear of the unknown by parents. So as I'm sure you guys already know that the standabouts are completely parent operated this year. So parents that aren't used to this kind of stuff, you know, are used to the, the leaders taking over and taking care of everything. They're going to be intimidated. They're not necessarily going to want to take it on. Right? So as leaders, if we want our girls to sell, we need to help them as best we can. So we need to help the parents book the standabouts, show them pictures of how to set up their table, right? They've never done this before. As leaders, we've always said, set up the booths um, and made the tables look pretty and how to display the cookies and all that kind of stuff. So we can show pictures to the parents on, on how to best set it up. Um, talk to them about different payment types that they can accept and how to run the stand overall, because it's essentially going to be run the same way a booth would be. Then of course, when the sale is over, we're going to help them process the payment on the GSSC website, right? Because the parents have to pay for the cookies. Um, they get, you know, they can keep the cash if, you know, that they've received and then they can pay on the GSSC website with their own credit card. So we can direct them to that, send them the link where they need to go. Um, as well as we can also help them book the return of the leftover cookies to the cupboard. Right? So like Kelly said, they're going to go on the website. They're going to find the link. They're going to fill out the form to say, I have X amount of boxes left and book that day and time where they're going to return those leftover cookies. Um, or if they sell out, instruct the parents to let you know as the leader, so you can contact council and council can mark that standabout as completely sold out. So they're not expecting any of those cookies to come back. Um, and then also what I've been doing, I, I have significantly type A personality. I am a control freak by nature. I am a bookkeeping and record keeping freak. Um, but I have all of my parents send me pictures of their cupboard payments, their receipts, everything, those pink receipts filled out to say exactly how many boxes they sold, if they did any operation cookie, when they made their payment, how much their payment was, all of that stuff. So as much as council is going in and allocating the boxes to the girls, I can go into eBuddy, I can make sure that it's done. I can make sure that the numbers are right. I can make sure that their girl got their credit and that everything is good, right? Because the parents are making all these things, you know, the, the girls are making all these sales, the parents are doing all this stuff, but they have no way of going in to make sure that their girl is getting credit. But that's what we can do as a leader and say, hey, you know, Mr. So-and-so, I checked, you know, Madison got, you know, all the credit for her cookies. She's up to this number, you know, sold so far. She's doing great. You know, let's keep on going. Do you need help booking another stand? Um, whatever it may be. So this year, social media is key. Right? Everybody's all over social media. Um, so what we have done is we have joined a ton of local mom Facebook groups. And I just go through, I, I'm in West Babylon. So I go in and I look at all the different West Babylon mom groups. I don't, we can't do any of the buy and sell groups. We can't do the marketplace or anything like that, but the, the local chats, you know, like, hey, how's my, you know, my, my seven-year-old is struggling in school. Does anybody have advice? Those types of groups. Um, and when I join them, I'm looking to see how many members are in that group because the more members, the better. Right? So we go into those groups and then I go in regularly and I post that, hey, Girl Scout Cookie Standabout happening this weekend, this date, this time, this location to draw people's attention. Right? I post a picture every single time I post because you guys are familiar with Facebook, right? You scroll through, a picture is what's going to grab your eye. So you, you post a picture of a little girl, you know, with a sign saying, get your yummy Girl Scout cookies. It's going to catch your eye. You're going to look at her little sister who's only four years old, holding this big giant sign that's bigger than she is and it's going to grab your attention. Oh, they're so cute, right? You post a picture of them standing out in the snow, freezing their toes off. And they're going, oh, that's awesome. They're working so hard. I want to go support them. You post a picture of the back of your car filled with. You post a picture of the back of your car filled with literally hundreds and hundreds of boxes of cookies. This is literally the back of my car. You know, and people go, oh, they have cookies in stock, I can go get them right now. I can, I can fix my, my cookie craving right now. Even just funny memes, you know, really excited to give this whole meal prep thing a try. Anything that's gonna grab their attention, right? So I literally just Google for, you know, Girl Scout cookie memes and I put them on. Um, and it really gives us a whole lot of, of attention. And, when, I can't tell you how many times we did a stand and people would come up to us and say, I saw your post on Facebook. You know, I'm so glad you posted it. I was right around the corner shopping, or I was over here, I was over there, or I live right by you. You know, I'm so glad you posted, I would've never known that you were here. So you definitely wanna utilize that as much as you can. Um, so social media examples. So again, encourage people to share your posts, right? Make your pu- your post public and they can share, you know, so their neighbors, their close friends see them. Um, obviously, the more people that see it, the better. Um, and what we've also been doing is we've been offering free local contactless deliveries for people that can't come to the stand. So when we make these posts, people will comment, oh, I can't get there that, you know, that weekend. Are you doing a stand next weekend? I can say, well, I'm not sure yet, but you know, if you pay me via Venmo, I can drop the cookies at your doorstep. Right? So there's no contact there, but we're get, still getting the sale, the customer's still getting their cookies. And these are just some example, these are actual posts. Alicia here is, is one of my co-leaders. You can see how many comments we're getting on our social media posts. Thirty-one comments, twenty-two comments. You know, and these are thirty-one comments worth of, hey, I want cookies. These are all sales, all these comments are sales. And also, we scroll through those, those pages and people will post their own post going, I'm looking for Girl Scout cookies, does anybody know where I can get Girl Scout cookies? And people will comment and usually they'll tag, you know, the Girl Scout parents that they know. And as much as this sounds like a really obnoxious brag, our troop gets about seventy-five percent of those comments. Tagging me, tagging any of my co-leaders, any of the other girls in our troop. Cause we, we're just super, super, super well-known in the social media world. We, again, make our presence known, um, and we try to satisfy our customers' needs as, as quickly as possible. So it's a sign. So you wanna have your girls helped to make some big, bright signs that you can hang around the area to direct traffic to your stand, right? So standabouts, we're supposed to have in front of our house. We can't go, you know, to the nearest main road or anything like that. But, we can hang signs, right? So make some big signs, staple them to the telephone pole, put a big old arrow on it and say, hey, come get your Girl Scout cookies. I had a, um, a Peapod truck driver come and stop at one of our stands because he saw the sign as he was driving down the block. And he's, oh, I thought it was an old sign. And I, you know, so I came and I saw that, you know, you guys were here and I was so excited. And he bought like ten boxes of cookies. And then another thing is that you can make tags to put on your bags that you're giving to the customers or, you know, some sort of a business card. And put your contact information on the tag, so they can find you when they wanna reorder. And what I personally did, I don't feel comfortable giving out my personal information to strangers. I don't think that's necessarily a good idea. But what I've done is I made a Gmail email address specific for cookie sales. And it's literally callie'scookies3823@gmail.com and a Google Voice phone number. So it's completely untraceable, nobody can find me other than, yeah, it forwards to my cellphone. And it blocks my caller ID. If I call out from that number, it gives it a completely different phone number. So people can contact me without actually knowing where I live or my personal phone number, my personal email address or anything like that. And that's actually become quite popular for us. So this one's super important. This was drilled into me from I was, when I was a little Girl Scout myself and my mother was on my case constantly. Let the girl work the stand. As a parent, as a type A parent, you know, it's so easy for me to jump in and say, no, let me do the money and let me handle this and let me do this and let me, you know, make the table nice. But the customers wanna buy from the girls. They don't wanna see the parents doing all the work. There's people that will literally drive right by if they see the parent work in that stand instead of the girls. So have the girls wear their uniform, they can wave to cars as they're driving by, holding up their signs. You know, dancing, messing around, calling out to people, make it fun, let them goof off. That's what kids do. And people find it endearing and cute. So the parent eventually gets obnoxious, but for the thirty seconds that somebody sees it as they're driving by, to them, it's cute, right? So we want the kids to draw in the attention. The girls can bag cookies, they can count the total due, they can collect the money, they can give change. It's all about learning. Let the little siblings help out. You know, we have to keep in mind, we have to remember that these cookie sales are to help the girls learn things like interpersonal skills, business ethics, money management, marketing, teamwork, you know, all that stuff that cookie sales teaches them. And if we're not letting them do all of the different aspects of a stand, they're not gonna learn those things. So let them do it, let them learn. The customers are very understanding when it takes the girl a little bit of time to calculate what the total do is or anything. They appreciate the hard work that the girls are doing, so let them do it. And of course, don't forget to be COVID-safe, right? We have hand sanitizer on our table, we use it ourselves, we let other people use it if they wanna use it. And of course, we're wearing our masks. Uh, there will be people that'll hesitate to come to your table if they don't see that precautions are being taken. Right? So we have to make sure that, that we're safe about it. Um, and then once your sale is done, you wanna go back to that social media and post a thank you. You know, to all the people that commented, all the people that came, hey, thank you so much, you know, my daughter sold, you know, X amount of boxes today. She's now, you know, halfway to her goal. If people see that a girl is close to her goal, they're gonna buy specifically just to help out. Cause they get excited, you know, a girl's only twenty boxes from her goal, people will turn around and buy twenty boxes of Girl Scout cookies from you. We've had it happen multiple times. Um, and also, you can also, of course, post if you're planning another stand, hey, listen, we're sold out of cookies, thank you so much for your support, but we'll be set up again. You know, next weekend or, or PM me to, you know, if you wanna buy some cookies and I'll pick them up for you. And you can put it in as a catch-up or however you wanna handle it. But definitely, social media is key and help those parents out, because parents are gun-shy. They're, they're definitely very nervous to take this on. They think it's a, a big, huge, humongous deal, but it can be very seamless, it can be very easy, especially if the leaders help out. So don't be afraid to jump in there and help them out. Um, and those have been our experiences. Like I said, we're selling a ton of cookies, they're, they're going like crazy. So hopefully, you got a little bit something out of this. Does anybody have any questions? Alright, well, thank you.
That was really a great presentation. I just had.
Thank you.
So thorough and you did it so energetically. That was really great.
Ah, thanks Sarah, I appreciate it.
Well done.
Thanks Kelly.
I, I know I picked the right person. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Informative, and it, it's nice hearing it firsthand from someone who's actually doing them.
We've, we've, to be honest with you, we've really had a lot of fun. And like I said, I was very doubtful about these standabouts. And you could ask my co-leader, I mean, I was just like, you gotta be kidding me, there's no way these things are gonna sell. And now I'm at the point where I said to my co-leader yesterday, I'm like, you know, next year, if we're doing booth sales, like, nobody's gonna wanna do the booths, because these stands, like, the girls are getting credit for two hundred and fifty to three hundred boxes, you know, in a weekend. Like, who's gonna wanna do a booth and, and have to share it, you know? So, um, obviously, we're going to be doing booths and they're going to do it whether they like it or not. But yes, uh, they're, they're just, they've been really amazing.
Fantastic. Thank you so much again.
No problem.
Alright, so we, we, as the questions come in, we'll just keep answering them. Kelly's been answering them in the Q and A, but we wanna go to Jackie next uh, for our update on membership.
Hello, everybody. I'm not exactly sure how I'm supposed to follow that amazing presentation by Ashley, but I will, um, sure try. Thank you for having me tonight. I really just have one thing I wanna talk about. Tonight, we just received, uh, Girl Scouts of Suffolk County, as of today, just received a D-Pass grant for Girl Scout Destinations today. So destinations, if you don't know, are trips that are inside the United States and outside the country that girls can go on to learn about different things, uh, visit different countries. Um, and I know during the time of COVID, you know, it, talking about leaving the country is a scary thing. But this year, they will be honoring D-Pass, um, destination applications. You know, for the winter twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year, summer twenty twenty-two, or summer twenty twenty-three. So if you have a cadet, a senior or ambassador Girl Scout, I urge you to go to the Destinations website at GirlScouts.org. There are a ton of different opportunities, uh, for, for girls to go from anywhere, from Maine to Montana, to California, to London, to Japan. Um, and we've had girls, um, go to Japan and Costa Rica and Ireland, uh, and had amazing, amazing times. They, they meet other Girl Scouts, um, and they just have the time of their lives. So I know right now, people a little gun-shy about leaving the country and things of that nature. But as things start to open up and we get back to our lives, um, you know, maybe summer twenty twenty-three, you have an older Girl Scout who would wanna participate. Uh, and again, the D-Pass grant, uh, once a girl applies and is accepted to the program, she then comes through the council and we have funds available to help pay for her trip, uh, because the Girl Scout does have to pay for her trip on her own. Uh, so these funds are available to any girls, uh, who were accepted into the program. So if you have any questions about destinations, you can reach out to me, um, jmorgan@gssc.us. I'm happy to answer questions for you. Um, and the only other thing I would like to say is that, um, we have some really great programs coming up. Uh, the Programs Department is definitely killing it. Uh, Membership is doing, uh, some programs as well. Anybody who's done crafting with Kerry, uh, Mythbusters, and we have some great other programs coming later this spring. So keep an eye out if you have just some girls that, you know, wanna engage in different ways. And we're happy to have you. And any questions, always feel free to reach out. Thanks so much.
And real quick, we're gonna go to Sarah next.
Alright, hi, everybody. Um, I just wanted to address some questions that we got prior to the meeting. As you, I believe someone already said it again, trips and travel are still suspended at this time. So we've had a couple of questions asking, can we come use the archery range? Or will we be doing in-person programs? Or will we be doing, you know, offering other outdoor activities on the camp? You know, we are hopeful that we're moving toward that, but at this time, I just don't wanna make any promises that it's definitely gonna happen this spring. But we are hoping by mid-April, there'll be some kinda change, and that's something that we can move forward toward. That go, also goes for camping. So anything other than your regularly scheduled troop meeting is considered a trip. So all of that at this time is still suspended. We did get a question about, uh, will there be an additional cadet journey? So there will be a cadet journey being offered May twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth. It's a three-part journey. If that doesn't work for you, uh, we do have other resources that we could provide you with or connect you to so that you could get, you know, parts or all of that journey completed on your own. Most of the end-of-the-year calendar is up and live and ready to be registered for. So if you wanna check out our program calendar on our website, gssc.us, uh, you can see programs for every level right there. I did want to, of course, discuss camp. So registration will be live on the website on Friday. So I'm just gonna go over some of the things that we went over last week, just in case you weren't here. Sorry if this is a repeat session for you. But we will be offering nine weeks of in-person summer camp at Camp Edie only, day camp only. It's going to run from June twenty-eighth through August twenty-seventh. It's going to be three hundred and seventy-five dollars per week. Week two, which is the week of Fourth of July, is only a four-day camp week, so that will be three hundred dollars. Because we are keeping the groups in little pods and units that will rotate independently of each other, we are not going to be offering bus transportation, it's pickup and drop-off only. And we are not going to be offering additional amenities, so the children won't go off-site and mix and go to horseback riding or other things. However, we are going to include archery, which normally was seventy-five dollars per week. We're going to include it with everyone's camp this year. So they'll be able to take part in that at one to two times per week included in the price. Because of the non-mixing of the groups, we won't be offering before and aftercare. But we will be extending the day from eight to six, Monday through Friday. So, if you need a before care, you can just drop off early. If you don't, you can drop off by nine. And same goes for pickup. Normal pickup is four-thirty, but if you needed that extra time till six, that's all included in the price this year. Normally, we do provide lunch. This year, it is bag lunch. We will provide two snacks per camper, uh, which will be individually packaged, of course, for safety. We will not be offering Pixie Camp this year, which is our, for those of you that don't know, it's our three-to-five-year-old sessions for girls. And then I also did get a couple of questions about counselor and training. So hot off the press, we will be offering two virtual trainings for girls, which will be on our website shortly. One is going to be Wednesday, May nineteenth, and the other is going to be Tuesday, June first, from six to seven. Uh, your girls do have to be registered Girl Scouts in order to take the training and to be a CIT, which I think everyone knows, but I just say it anyway. So those will be on the website shortly. We're also getting a lot of calls and emails about, uh, applying for summer camp to work. At this point, we are only accepting applications for girls and males eighteen and over. Um, in the past, we have gone a little bit younger, but this year, we're focusing on eighteen and over. Uh, we won't be using international staff this year, so there's lots of openings for girls. So if you know anybody great that loves kids, please send them our way, uh, so that will be going on as well. Okay, does anybody, so for counselor and training, I see there's a question in the chat. So camp goes up to girls entering tenth grade. Anyone older than that is welcome to work, uh, not work. Take the training and help us as a CIT. Okay, um, plan on programs for seniors and older. There's currently, she is running journeys at this time. I can look on the calendar, I can have our program specialists contact you. If there was anything in particular you wanted to, uh, you know, ask her for or ask her about. And we also have other resources that we can send you to, if that didn't work for your girls. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, if you do have questions, you can always email camp@gssc.us. But again, just a reminder, it is going to be a limited capacity. So there are going to be a hundred and twenty campers per week. So nobody, we have never been that limited before, and we normally go almost double over that. So if this is something that you have your heart set on, or that you need for childcare, it would be in your best interest to get on right away. We have people emailing and calling every day. And the group sizes are going to be fifteen girls each. Okay, so that is definitely not our norm. And no, no overnight this year. We are, you know, we're confident and hopeful that next year, we can return back to the craziness that we're used to, but, uh, this year is going to be just a modified version of that.
There was one more question about, um, what other activities are done at camp? I think that maybe that's. Well, it's in the Q and A.
Oh, in the Q and A, okay. So other activities that they do, they will be swimming. We did get a lot of questions about that. So they'll be swimming, they go to the trading post, they do arts and crafts, they have sports and games activities. Now they'll be including archery, um, they'll have break time for lunch and snack, of course. Um, and if we are able, we may even, because of the reduced amount of people this year, we are hopeful that we'll be able to get in double pool, which people have been asking for, for years, but with that many girls and two pools, we just, it's close to impossible. They also do paddle boating, older girls do canoeing, they do fishing. We have special guests sometimes, so there, they'll be plenty busy. And I did, okay, so I see a question in here, and I should've addressed this earlier. We did get a lot of people who were unable to use their earned week of camp as a product sale prize last year. And they wanted to know, can they use it this year? Absolutely. So if you do have that, we just asked that you go into the system, sign up your daughter, add the weeks in your cart, and then let us know that, you know, that she'll be attending, and then we can put in those discounts for her. Okay, uh, same as, you know, as anything else, if you have those certificates and you wanna use them this summer and you have multiple weeks, you gotta get on there right away. Um, and then you can let Kelly know that you've registered, or myself know, or Maria Fogarty. Just camp@gssc.us. You just wanna let us know right away, so we can get in there and secure your spot. Just camp at G S S C dot U S. You just want to let us know right away so we can get in there and secure your spot. And Kelly, you just got a message. My daughter wants campus her prize.
Well, yeah, when I heard that there was, you know, the capacity limit, I was going, oh, how does, I don't know how this works.
Yes, you definitely, in the past, we had a deadline of the Wednesday before the the upcoming week. You could sign up until then without penalty. You know, you can try. I just don't know. You know, and again. In the past, you were able to transfer weeks and things like that. You can still attempt, but it's all gonna depend on availability.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, I think next we're gonna go to Nicole for a training update.
Hi, everyone. Real fast, just want to give you some quick updates. The March and April calendar of trainings are up. Which includes new leader training. And there are going to be some new videos on the website on how to use the new interface for the volunteer toolkit. For those of you who are having a little bit of a hard time trying to locate it. But it will be up very soon. Our troop showcase this month is going to be best practices on the highest awards. And we are, we are going to be running the introduction to bronze and silver awards. Again, we did just have a Go Gold. We will be running another Go Gold in May. So if you have any specific questions on that, you can email us. We are having a Cookie One-O-One for new leaders and any troops that are just joining the program on Monday. March fifteenth. I know we've got a lot of requests for that, so we are going to be talking to you about how you could catch up and how you could participate. Those leaders that are looking for the CPR training. We are running another online portion for this month. I will send you my email address in the chat if you missed the email on how to register. And I am looking for leaders who would like to be panelists for our troop showcase for April. We are having a major event that we are partnering with with the other councils in New York State. For older girls that is focusing on wellness and self-care, and it's a really wonderful virtual conference. With lots of different workshops for them to choose from. And so April, we're focusing really on resiliency, self-care. And so our troop showcase at the end of April is going to be on how troops are incorporating self-care and wellness activities. Either through badge work or just through usual troop activities. And so I'm gonna put the nomination form in the chat. I would love to. See if anyone would be interested in being a panelist. Feel free to nominate someone that you know. And I'll also put my email in there as well. And if in your travels, you are finding somebody who wants to be a new leader for the fall for any level troop. Please send them our way, and we are happy to talk to them about what it means to be a leader. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm chatting. I'm on the chat and doing the thing at the same time. Okay, so next, we're gonna bring Janet is gonna introduce our guest speaker for this month.
Good evening, everyone. I am, I would like to introduce, there's gonna be two guest speakers. The first is gonna be. Herman Seiya Salisa. She is a team leader at the E A C Network, New York Project Hope. And she is joined by her colleague Stephanie this evening. So let me turn it over to you. Herman Seiya, go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you for having me, everybody. I'm going to share my screen because I have a presentation.
I'll introduce myself. In the meantime, I'm Stephanie Gerretoweyman. And I'm the Crisis Counselor with Project Hope.
Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you.
All right. So as you, as Jen has stated, my name is Herman Sina. I'm a team leader. And I'm joined by Stephanie. We're from the E A C Network. I wanted to come before all of you to talk about the New York Project Hope program. For all those who have not gotten the opportunity to work with or come across the E A C Network. E A C is a nonprofit organization that has a diverse set of social service programs and direct support services. We help people with issues that incorporate children and youth, family and community, behavioral health and criminal justice, et cetera. I don't know if anybody else noticed, but we're going through a pandemic. Which brought up unique, unique issues and struggles for all of us. To be of help to the community, E A C has teamed up with New York Project Hope, New York State's COVID- nineteen crisis counseling program. To provide support services to Suffolk County residents who need assistance coping with the stressors of COVID- nineteen. New York Project Hope is a program of the New York State Office of Mental Health. It's funded by FEMA and administered by SAMSA. It's the statewide crisis counseling initiative that is completely free, confidential, and anonymous for every New York residents. So. I can anybody even imagine that we're pretty much a year into this? This time in twenty twenty, I'm sure most of you were taking, were making eventful plans. For me, I was actually planning my graduation. And, you know, international trips. And then on March twentieth, things got too real, and the president declared COVID- nineteen a natural national disaster. So New York Project Hope is one of those services that is being offered based on that declaration. The main aim of this program is thus four-fold. So first, we're trying to help Suffolk County residents understand their current situations and reactions to COVID- nineteen. Two, we're trying to reduce stress and provide emotional support. Promote the use of development of coping strategies. And to connect New Yorkers with other people and agencies who can help them in their recovery process. COVID- nineteen has affected all of us. There are people and organizations all throughout Long Island that has been established, that have established resources to help you address your needs. Our crisis counselors, like Stephanie, can provide resources that can assist you as you work to make the connections you need to manage the changes in your life. So I hope if you need. You need to do so, you would reach out to us for a listening ear. Sometimes it helps to talk to somebody that you don't even know. Life for almost a year has been very surreal and emotionally taxing. Reach out to us if you're stressed out or even just numb to the whole situation that's been happening so far. Our crisis counselors are trained, knowledgeable, and they never judge. They never judge. Talking to them is free, confidential, and anonymous. I want to stress those three things. Our contact information is on the screen, and you can always get that information. Online and from Janet, the Girl Scout. And now I pass this on to Stephanie.
So in addition to the crisis counseling hotline, we are also offering coping circles. So this is, provides a way for people to get together to discuss a certain topic, of course, virtually. And it's again, free of charge. It's anonymous that you know, you could have camera on, camera off. You could make up a name, you know, it doesn't matter. But we've started with three topics. We're going to do one on grief. One on parenting during a pandemic, and one on stress. And we're also going to do, touch on job loss, trauma, substance abuse, and isolation. Later on. These, this is the schedule so far for the first three coping circles.
Yeah, so we're doing it in March, and they're all on Mondays from. Three P M to four P M. So if anybody is interested in joining. And then they can just pop in.
So, you know. Self-care, you know, and I'm sure you, you guys have all heard this term, self-care. You know, it's important to find ways to relax, to unwind, to de-stress. And it helps you function. It helps you be a better parent, a better partner, a better, you know. Just all-around better person in life and be better to yourself as well. So these, this is the kind of information that we try to share and keep going. We disseminate information on E A C Network websites. As well as the Project Hope Facebook page, Instagram, and Twitter, so you can, you can follow us. So I thought we would take a minute just to do a little bit of breathing. If you can just kind of maybe close your eyes for a second, or, you know, sit comfortable in your seat. And just get quiet for a second. And take a breath through your nostrils if you can and extend. So that your breath comes into your belly. So, so as you inhale through your nostrils, your belly swells just a little bit. One, two, three, four, on the inhale, and then. If you blow out through your mouth on the exhale. So we can do that three times. I'm just going to start. Now. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. There are a number of different ways you can do these breathing exercises. There's one that's called four, seven, eight. Which is actually something that I do a lot. You breathe in through your nostrils for a count of four. You hold it for a count of seven, and then you release it for a count of eight. If you do that several times, I find that in bed at night, sometimes if I am having a hard time relaxing. It's really, it's really a helpful exercise. And as you can see, there are benefits to this kind of breathing. You know, besides releasing stress. Lowers blood pressure, improves digestion, and it helps support correct posture, I'm told. I guess, if you're really careful about how you're sitting and how you're breathing. So we can move on to the next slide. So here again is our contact information and our social media information. Again, it's free, it's anonymous, and shared with, you know, with your community, with other. Other people in your organization, friends. You know, we're coming on an anniversary of COVID. I think a lot of feelings come up, even though a lot of people feel that we've gotten past certain things and certain of the initial fears. A lot comes up sometimes when you have a little space to think about. Everything that we've gone through in the last year, all the changes that we've been through. And, you know, and some of the losses, and they may not be necessarily loss of human life, although most of us probably know someone. If not ourselves, who have lost someone, but we probably know a lot of other people who have lost someone. So, you know, it brings up a lot of feelings. So people should kind of give themselves the opportunity to think about that and. And talk about it if they need to. And that's what we're here for.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns, issues? Anything to bring up?
Right now, there's no questions in the chat, but everyone is thinking that we need to add this more to our lives. And also specifically to the cookie cupboard, just because we all need a little bit of wellness in the cupboard right now.
Yes, if anybody has any questions in the future, something comes up. Then you can always reach out to me. My contact information is on the screen, my email and my work phone. So, yeah.
And can I just add one thing? I would just like to say that you ladies are very, very impressive. You know, your, your cookie sales are out of this world, and I know how hard, you know, how hard you guys work. It's a lot. It's not nothing to organize the kind of operation that you guys are running, and you're doing a great job, and thank you for it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it gives the girls. Like some sort of structure, grounding, something to do with all of, all of this craziness going on.
Yeah, we didn't think the sales were actually, we thought they were gonna just not be as, you know, successful as they have been. But I think it brings that sort of normalcy that we're all kind of looking for, plus, you know, cookies tend to make people happy. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We've been trying to do a, like a wellness section on our social media on Sundays. So this is just going to add to that. And then just a reminder, we're recording tonight. If you want to share it with anyone else, or then, and we'll also have this posted on the website. So that we can share this information with as many people as possible.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much, ladies, for having me, and I hope you guys have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, so we have next, not, not least, obviously, we're gonna go to, I mean, because the shop. So we're gonna go to our shop presentation. So I have PowerPoint. I'm just gonna share my screen. And Anne and Maria will take it away. So can everybody see that? Yeah. Okay, good. I'm ready.
To the top. Thank you, Jenna. We have to go to the top. Sorry.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on. Sorry. I was, I was reviewing it. To make sure that it worked. Now we'll play.
Thank you.
Heck, on my toes, on my toes.
No, you are, and I'm still not great at this, so I'm super happy for your help. Thank you. All right, hey, everybody. Welcome to the shop part of the virtual town hall this month. Thank you for having us. So we just want to, Marie and I want to highlight a couple of things that's going on with the shop right now. So next slide, happy one hundred and ninth birthday Girl Scouts. So right now, we're offering kits for fifteen dollars, and these are the kits that we are offering. We have our wonderful little sloth man. And it comes with a pack of stickers and a pencil, scented pencil, as does our little monkey. George, and as does our unicorn. And as does our narwhal. So they've been doing very well. We still have some left in the shop, so. Very sweet, very cute. A lot of leaders are ordering them for their meetings to celebrate the birthday of Girl Scouts. And then we are also doing our standabout kits. In here, you get for twenty-five dollars a cart, you get a pack of balloons, two cookie buttons, and a sign. So something to help the girls along with their standabout sales. And then, of course, there are the Cookie Entrepreneur Family Pins. A lot of the families, as Ashley had said, are very involved with their daughters. To assist in the cookie sales. So of course, there's the Daisy Year One, Year Two, Brownie Year One, Year Two. Junior Year One, Year Two, and then, of course, on the next slide, Cadets Year One, Two, Three. Senior One and Two, and Ambassador One and Two. So they're in the shop. We are stocked, and they are for sale as well. And then we have Fun Patches. We brought in a couple of new ones, but before that, we have Girl Scouts Digital Cookies for twenty twenty-one. We have for those adorable little daisies, first Cookie Sale Girl Scouts Fun Patch. And then we also have, I love Selling Girl Scout Cookies, Cookie Drop Off, and Cookie Mom. We have so many wonderful Cookie Moms. And then, things to look out for, we have our first Cookie Sale Kit, our Cookie Diva Kit, and a Thank You Cookie Mom Kit. So a couple of little things we're trying to put out there to help the leaders say thank you. To highlight some of the girls and what they've achieved. And we also have one other thing coming, which will, more to come on it, our subscription boxes from the shop. So more to come. And now I will turn it over to Maria for the raffles.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. So we have three raffles tonight. The first one will be, we have a rhinestone puff key ring and a pen, Diamond Rider Pen. And the winner for that one is Christine S. Yay, Christine. Our second raffle prize is one of our new Girl Scout Strong Face Masks, and we have a Girl Scout Lanyard. And the winner for that one is Lisa Kurtzrock. Yay, Lisa. And then our third raffle for the night is we have a Jute Bag, Cross Body Bag. And the winner for that one is Cheryl D'Agostino. Congratulations to everybody who won. I will send out emails to everybody, and you can let me know which location you'd like to pick them up at, and we will get them out there for you.
Okay, so does anybody else have any questions? Last call on questions. I'm glad to see that Lisa won because she's been at every single town hall since the beginning. So I'm glad you want some. So any other questions? Again, if you guys have anything, you can email Product Sales to get answers for that. Anything you send into Customer Care will get allocated to the person as it comes. Look forward, look on your social media. Make sure to follow us on social media for the, like, the most up-to-date information. As, and we'll be sharing, if anything happens differently with booth sales, with anything in product sales, all of the new items in the shop will be on there, do I think? We want there to be booths, but we can't definitely say it. So right now, we're trying to look at the numbers and then try to see if anything goes up after the Easter holiday. So what we're trying to do is to open them up for the, like, in an April timeline, but again, it's all going to be dependent on the numbers, because if we say yes to booth sales, we have to say yes to trips. We have to say yes to a lot of other things that are council-wide. So that's the only reason why. But if, again, if you're doing the standabouts, even if you're not in a great area, you can make signs. Yeah, so the, for Holly, the trips is part of booth sales. So in order to be able to open up booth sales, we would have to open up trips. So that's why we can't just say yes to one and not the other. So those, we're, we're looking at it all the time. Tammy, our, our new CEO, checks the numbers daily, and she always kind of gives us an update when we have the meetings with her. But we're really trying to make sure that we're just in a good space with the community so that the numbers aren't going too high, and we're keeping the girls as safe as possible because they're the most important part of everything that we do. But follow our social media, check out our website. Anytime there's going to be any new post that we're putting on the website, we're putting a post on social media to bring it to the website because we know that we keep adding more information to the website, and it could be a little confusing. I'm not saying it's because of me, and I keep adding stuff to the website, but I am saying that it's probably because I keep adding stuff to the website or asking for Elena to add stuff to the website. So just, if you try to follow us on social, that'll give you the most up-to-date info. Is there anything else in the chat?
Maria, there's a question in here. Christine S. wants to know if she could pick up her, her reward that she just won tomorrow at the cupboard.
Sure. Which, which cupboard, Christine?
Oh, Comec.
Comec, yeah. No problem. I'll, I'll bring it there.
Sounds good.
Okay, so if, unless there's, I'll give one more second, or one more minute. Oh, because she's getting patches anyway. It looks like. So again, I'll, I'll leave the, the site open in case anybody else has questions, but thank you all for joining us at our March ten Town Hall, another one in the books. We have, when is April's? April's is, let's give you the date for April, but I don't have. And I have it.
Thirteenth, April thirteenth.
Okay, so I was going to write it down, but I forgot. So join us for, on April thirteenth for our April Town Hall. If you have any questions, when you sign up, you can put them in your registration. If not, email us. I would say text us, but only some of you have my number. But anyway, so email us, check out our website, and thank you all for joining us. Have a great night.
Thank you, Ashley, for, for your time. Your presentation was wonderful.
Oh, you're so welcome. Thank you for asking me to do it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
I'll see you guys in the cupboard tomorrow.
Okay, have a good night.
All right, I think that's.